The agenda to give some time for Luke to join us. Um, okay, so I'm calling the meeting to order at seven oh two P M. Um, can our vice mayor please lead the pledge allegiance? Go ahead, Jared.
Ready? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, individual liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. I think I'm gonna start taking turns to the council members. So they will join in the pledge allegiance at their own, at their own time. Okay. Jared, can you please go ahead and um, and do a call of orders? So, Councilmember Jared Stoffus. Councilmember Jimmy Tarlo.
Jimmy, you're muted.
Yeah.
Councilmember Valerie Woodall.
I'm here.
Okay, so we do have Corey and myself as mayor are here, and Luke should be jumping on the call pretty soon. Okay, Vice Mayor, can you also read the agenda into record, please?
I can. Um, the agenda is special legislative meeting of the mayor and city council. City of Mount Rainier, Thursday, July twenty first, twenty twenty two, seven P M. Virtual meeting number one, call to order pledge of allegiance. Number two, review of the agenda. The mayor and council will review the agenda for the meeting, adding or deleting topics of public interest or discussion. Number three, public comment. Number four, discussion and vote on financing options for Pots Hall or the Welcome Center. The mayor and council will discuss the options available to the city to finance renovations and rehabilitations of Pots Hall as a welcome center. Uh, number five, introduction and adoption of emergency ordinance zero seven, twenty twenty two. Amending the code of ordinances of the city of Mount Rainier, chapter thirteen, traffic, to add section thirteen dash one twenty three, speed monitoring systems. Therefore, codifying the city of Mount Rainier's speed monitoring system, ordinance number nine dash two thousand nine. And amending the city's speed monitoring system to reflect recent changes in state law. The mayor and council will introduce and adopt the emergency ordinance zero seven dash twenty twenty two. And then number six, adjournment.
Thank you so much, council. Vice Mayor has read the agenda. Can you please let me know if we are moving forward with the agenda as presented or is there anything to be added or edited from this agenda? So I'm gonna start with, uh, war one, Jimmy, anything to add or delete? I guess that's, that's a no, and you're muted, Jimmy, because I can hear you. Jared and Valerie, anything to add or remove?
Can you hear me now?
I could hear you now.
Hear you now.
Yeah.
We can see you now. All right, perfect. Valerie?
I'm good with the agenda. Thank you.
Okay, Jared?
Nothing to add.
Okay, so seeing that there's nothing to add, um, we'll move forward with this agenda as presented with no changes whatsoever. Um, by unanimous agreement. All right. So moving on to item number three, public comment. Members of public are welcome to have public comments. You have three minutes to speak. Um, please put all your questions together after three minutes. Council, mayor and council may, um, may answer your, um. May answer your questions. Uh, the other thing to point out, if it's an item on the agenda, you're welcome to speak after, you know, we speak on the agenda item. So don't think this is the only time you get to speak, um, but that way you do not speak and repeat yourself for this, for that in itself. It will just be extra time not needed. Either way, um, if you're part of a group, you have five minutes, but also means you are an authorized member of that group. And the rest of the members do forfeit their time to speak. Okay, uh, so do we have any members of public to comment? Please type on your chat your name, last name. Um, block and street number. Example, if you leave on thirty seven oh one, you just thirty seventh street, you just say thirty seven hundred thirty seventh street in Mount Rainier. So we could best identify you. Okay, so do we have any members of the public that wishes to speak? Please type on your chat and we'll call upon you. Anything on Facebook, Jared?
No comments on Facebook.
All right, I know I saw Jared look at me. Wait a minute, you put an extra T on those. It was a D. Okay. Okay, thank you guys so much. Um, okay. So we will be moving on to, um, item number four. Please note that Councilmember Lucetic has joined the meeting. So we have a full quorum as well. So welcome, Luke. Okay. All right, moving on to item number four, discussion and vote on financing options for Pots Hall slash Welcome Center. We have a thirty minute discussion. Uh, Melissa, please let us know as time grows close. So we know what to do and tap it in the chat or literally say, you have, you have five minutes, so we're aware of it, right? Mayor and council will discuss the options available to the city to finance renovations and rehabilitation of Pots Hall as a welcome center, and this is up for. It's up for, um, for vote, and this is to be clear, this is for financial, uh, finance, um, options. So this will be to direct our city manager and the city staff, legal, everybody else. What steps as the council we decide to take when it comes to financing? Okay, so this is step one. It is not, um, it, the documents are gonna come in a different meeting and legal will also let us know what's the time. That we need to put that information out to be able to meet whether it's like seven or fourteen days. They also will let us know. And we'll post the information as, as, as required by us. So I will start with first of all, doing a recap on what Pots Hall's Welcome Center is for those who are joining us. And also what is looking, um, for us to, um, when it comes to, um, projection for financing that we're thinking of. And then I will set the floor to Mr. Kamali and our legal team as well to be able to give us the information needed when it comes, um. To what options are we pursuing? So the Pots Hall Welcome Center, the Star Pots Hall Centers, the building adjacent to Mount, to City Hall. It is a historical building, conversations on Pots Hall's renovation as a welcome center, civic center. I've been going on for quite a few. I do see, uh, Councilmember Brian Neller is here. I know he's led a lot of the discussion. So has, uh, Mayor Miles as well. Um, so this is not a new topic when it comes to Pots Hall renovation. It's something that we have discussed quite a bit. Uh, the new council has decided to, um, to find what steps we could do to be able to make this a reality. Um, at this point, we have allocated through open meeting vote, um, a million dollars from ARPA funding. We have gone out and do our due diligence to be able to request funding. Between the money that's gonna be a word to us this year and the promised money is about one point five more, so that makes it about two point five. And we have asked for our team to go out and look for financing, financial, um, options. To be able to find out the other, the additional two to three million dollars. And, um, in the last meeting, we discussed this quite a few, you know. A few weeks ago, right before we broke into recess. Um, was that, um, we wanted the information moving forward. We asked our legal team and our city manager to go out and bring us. Information when it came to, uh, Truist, when it came to, uh, the H C C and anything else they, they could, they could bring with financing. Um, amount, the things that we need to do to make sure legally we, we are able to take care of this and present it openly to the public. So I will stay on that. That was the steps we gave for our team to go find out, and I'll give the, I'll seat the floor, um. To Mr. Kamali to present either, um, if Leslie has something, our attorney to present something on it. Um, how to carry on, but I want to do at least a brief summary. And council members, if I'm missing something at this point, let me know so that we have at least a brief introduction. We're good? All right, so Mr. Kamali, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate your introduction and hello to the council and Lindsay and, uh, other, uh. People that are joining us and also the city attorney just joined us. So as mayor and council requested. Uh, we went through different options, looking at the H C D and the Truist Bank. And I have Lindsay, uh, that is gonna provide the information, so I turn it over to Lindsay. After reviewing, uh, both options, my recommendation is to go with the Truist Bank, so I, uh. Uh, just, you know, turn it over to Lindsay to provide more information to mayor and council.
So before Lindsay goes, can you do me a favor? Whatever document she's gonna present, can you make sure it's on the screen so we can all follow along, not just us as mayor and council, but also. Our residents, um, as well. And Alyssa, thank you also for joining us as legal, also seeing Mr. Ram Hopkins. Economic Development Director also on the line, and this is an economic development, you know. Um, it falls under them as well. So thank you for also being here. Chief, thank you as well. Go, go ahead. Lindsay, the floor is yours.
Uh, thank you. Um, would you like me, uh, did the, uh, mayor and council, did you all get a chance to review? My July seventh memorandum? So should I just go to the bottom line, or would you like me to go over that memorandum?
Can you please go over it so that way we, we do our due diligence to be able to present it to the public so they know why we're making the decision to go with A or B?
Certainly. Um, and in that memorandum, I referred to Truist Bank's June twenty sixth proposal or commitment letter, and it's actually. I believe that was actually dated June twenty seventh, but the city has before it two current options. One is to close on a financing with Truist Bank. That closing has to happen by August twenty sixth, twenty twenty two. Um, under the current proposal from Truist Bank. And you know the terms of what that financing will be. You had referenced, um, D H C D there. And, um, under the Maryland Department of Housing and Community Development, there is a, an agency or department that is commonly referred to as the Community Development and Admin. Community Development Administration, and I refer to that as C D A. C D A goes out and puts together a pool of participants that may want to get financing for various projects. Those participants are all local governments or authorities of local governments. C D A is trying to get together a financing that currently is anticipated to close in October of twenty twenty two. But C D A actually goes out and issues revenue bonds of C D A to the public market. And then uses the proceeds of those revenue bonds to make loans to the participating local governments. You will have no way of knowing what the actual terms of your financing, if you go with the C D A option is. Until C D A actually issues its revenue bonds, and that is, or excuse me, prices its revenue bonds. And that is currently not, um, scheduled to be until mid-October twenty twenty two. So you have a firm proposal from Truist now, as long as you close by August twenty sixth. You won't know your actual financing terms if you go with C D A until the earliest mid-October. The C D A program is a very, very valuable program, and many, many local governments, um, have found it to be very beneficial. But it's a little bit of a comparison of apples and oranges, and there's never going to be a point in the process. Where you could line up the actual terms under a C D A option with the Truist Bank option. Um, and, and also, once C D A prices its bonds, you cannot back out. If the city didn't like where the capital markets are going, you would have to make the decision to withdraw from the C D A financing. Prior to the time C D A prices its bonds. Um, another key point is that while currently C D A is looking to close. And make the loans to the participating local governments. In late October, that schedule could slip even further. Or if the, if several participants withdrew, the C D A proposed financing could, for lack of a better term, fall apart. And be canceled entirely. Um, when C D A gave you some indicative yields, which were in June of this year. Which were a sort of aggregation of what it was projecting interest rates might be in October. And of course, nobody has a crystal ball. The indicative yields that C D A gave you at that time were actually higher than the interest rates. That Truist has presented to you under its firm proposal, as long as we close by August twenty sixth. For either financing option, the city is going to have to introduce and pass an ordinance. The schedule, um, between introduction and the ordinance being fully effective, taking into account all posting. And publication of fair summary requirements, we have at a minimum a twenty eight day window. We cannot do this financing authorization as an emergency ordinance that is prohibited under your charter. So we would have to, um, undertake two different meetings for introduction and passage of an ordinance for either program. Um, and, uh, I mean, bottom line, if you like the Truist option. And if by August twenty sixth or thereabouts, you reasonably expect. That the city will expend all of the bond proceeds when you decide on what the final amount is going to be. Plus investment earnings thereon within three years of the date of closing. So if we're looking at the Truist option, we're talking by late August twenty twenty five. Then Truist is probably the option you may want to consider. But at the end of the day, of course, it is your decision. Um, a couple other quick points. Uh, Truist has given you two payment options. With one, you could choose to prepay the bond you issued to Truist in whole or in part. Um, excuse me, in whole only, at any time with a premium of one percent of the outstanding principal amount of the bond. Or you could choose the prepayment option that for the first half of the term, you cannot prepay the bond at all. And then after the first half of the financing term, you could prepay it in whole only at any time with no premium. With the C D A financing option, you will generally not have the right to prepay the bond. Until at least roughly ten years after we close on the financing. So your prepayment options, excuse me, under Truist are a little bit more flexible. If the ability to prepay the bond is something you are looking to have. Um, again, while C D A is a wonderful financing program, there are a couple other things. Uh, there is a little bit more of a burden on city staff in each year to provide financial information if requested by C D A. You have some continuing disclosure obligations with C D A that are more voluminous. Than the continuing disclosure you would have with Truist. With Truist, you basically. Have to commit to provide your audited financial statements to Truist each year after those have been released. And to provide Truist with any other financial information it requests. Under the C D A program, you'll also have to pay your share of C D A's bond trustees' annual expenses. And those typically run for each participant somewhere between five hundred dollars and a thousand dollars per year. Um, also with the way the C D A program works, if you, um. If you default under your obligations to C D A, C D A can direct the state treasurer. And the state comptroller to divert any state shared revenues that are otherwise due to the city. Such as the city's share of the state income tax to C D A to cure your default. So, um, there is always that possibility that if there's a default, you may not get some or all of the revenues you're entitled to from the state. Now with the Truist option, if you were to find, if you were to take an action or an inaction that causes the bond to be taxable. The interest rate on the bond will automatically increase. And the interest rates that Truist quoted you, um, are known as bank qualified rates. And those rates they are offering to you, based on the expectation that the city has not issued and does not. Expect to issue within calendar year twenty twenty two. A total amount of certain types of tax exempt debt in excess of ten million dollars. If you violate that in some way, um, then the interest rate will be, um, increased. Under the Truist option automatically as well. You, you don't have those two interest rate increases under the C D A option. I think that's a fairly comprehensive overview, but I'm happy to answer any questions. Um, honestly, with, if you decide to go with the Truist option. We need to introduce ordinance either next Tuesday or next Wednesday. And hold a special meeting to consider the ordinance for passage, no later than Tuesday. August ninth or Wednesday, August, depending on when you introduce. So that's something else to, to consider. If you feel like the Truist option is pushing you. You do have the option at this time to go back to Truist at a later date and ask them for a new proposal. But there is no guarantee that Truist would offer you the same terms that it offered under its June commitment.
Thank you so much, uh, Leslie, for the, for reading through the whole entire memo and making sure, um, you follow through with what we're asking. There's a lot of information, wanna make sure that we make, um. So I will ask you one question, then I'll open it up to council. Uh, when it comes to this, does it matter if there was two million or the three million, uh, to be borrowed or no?
Well, you should not borrow more than you actually expect to spend with tax exempt debt. You cannot say, well, let's borrow three million, and if we don't end up needing all of it, then we won't use it all. That doesn't work for tax exempt debt. What we could do in the ordinance, however, is provide that. If you are not absolutely sure how much you want to borrow tonight, if you make a decision this evening. Um, we could have draft the ordinance for the Truist option. Of authorizing not to exceed three million and delegate to the mayor the authorization, working with. The city manager to determine the final principal amount of the bond, and that would not have to be determined until, um, close to closing in August. Um, that, that is one way to sort of address that, that question if, if you are not sure, but. Um, you, you should not borrow more than you reasonably expect to spend. Within the three years from the date of issuance. And of course, the two million versus the three million. Um, the interest rate is going to be the same under the Truist option. But for Truist, you have to decide not only what the maximum principal amount is gonna be, unless you know exactly how much you wanna borrow now. But you can also, you have to decide, do you want a ten year term or a fifteen year term? And which of the two Truist prepayment options you want? If you decide to go with the C D A option, we do not have to rush to introduce the ordinance next week. We have a longer lead time under that option for the ordinance.
Thank you so much. I just wanted to make sure that, that was, there was some clarity, because I know we have been going back and forward to be. But council, I'm gonna open up the floor, um, to you, um. Trying to figure out if any of you guys really cares. Okay, so we're gonna start with war one. Uh, Luke Chesek, go ahead, the first here, followed by Jimmy, followed by, uh, Valerie and Jared. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, and I wanna start off by saying something just for the benefit of the public who, um, might tune into this later. Um, the reason why it's important to develop this property is because this property has historic, there's few, sort of a couple of reasons. One reason is this product, this, this, this property, um, does have a historic designation. There's a lot of developers who really don't wanna touch that. So if there's an argument out there that we should develop this into something else, well, that's a really hard thing to do. Um, number two is turning this into a community and welcome center will enable the city to move its city council chambers to Pots Hall. Um, it would, which will free up space at City Hall for staff. Um, and that movement will allow the city to develop other properties potentially that the city owns. So it's sort of like the first domino to fall, to give the city future flexibility to develop other properties it owns, and that's just Luke, Luke's opinion there. Um, so in a sense, this is really a great move for the city, um, for those who want development elsewhere on, on city properties. Um, so setting that aside, um, so it's a good reason to do this and sort of, I think, a reason why, why we, a lot of us think we should do this. Um, not to mention that it'll be a cleaned up space, um, instead of just a vacant, um, undeveloped building right now. Um, uh, as far as the proposal that's in front of us today, um, I'm a fan of the Truist proposal. I have no, um, desire to wait until interest rates gets higher. Um, there, I know everyone hopes inflation goes down. I just don't see it happening. I don't see the Fed pressing pause on raising, um, interest rates. Um, anytime in the near future until inflation is. um, interest rates um, anytime in the near future until inflation is really totally under control. Um, I think they would almost risk a recession, um, um, rather than have inflation get out of control. So I want to lock in it right now. Um, so I want to go with the truest proposal. Uh, the question for me is whether to go with the ten year or the fifteen year. Um, the ten year proposal will save the city two hundred thousand dollars in financing charges over the course of time. Um, that's great. However, the ten year proposal um, will uh, cause a hit on our budget of, of, of forty thousand dollars on top of what is our current debt obligation. Our current debt obligation is about a hundred and thirty six thousand. I think we can pay that off this year. Um, and so this new debt obligation from truest would replace that, but be forty thousand dollars higher, about a hundred and seventy some thousand dollars um, with the ten year. Uh, with the, with the fifteen year um, proposal, well, yes, there would be a two hundred thousand dollar financing charge that would be higher over time. Um, it would actually be less of a debt obligation than what we are currently paying, um, which is attractive to me. Um, it gives the city flexibility um, in budgeting in years, years future. So I want to go with the truest. Um, uh, one question I have for Mr. Kamali is, um, I know we put a lot of um, uh, sort of contingency into this budget. Um, um, so I'm trying to ask Mr. Kamali, if, if we went with the ten year truest bond, um, do we have, is it, is it easy to find forty thousand dollars for this project because of how much of a contingency we have? So my question is really, what was our contingency in the budget? What was sort of the wiggle room that we left ourselves with? Um, how big was it? Um, and Mr. Kamali, do you know the answer to that question?
Uh, the contingency that we left, it was about two hundred. If I'm not mistaken, I have to check numbers. Uh, something close to a hundred, less than three hundred thousand dollars in that contingency.
More than a hundred thousand?
Yes.
Okay, so i- in my opinion, you know, I think we could eat the extra forty thousand dollars, save taxpayers two hundred thousand dollars over time um, and go with the ten year um, proposal. Um, so I think that's where I'm leaning. I could be convinced of the fifteen year one. Um, but I think I'm leaning for the ten year truest proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Remember, we have a three minute and then I could come back for you guys for a second round. I love you guys there, but I'm trying to be fair as well. All right, Jimmy, the floor is yours. And thank you for all the information. And Luke, um, for the other residents, Luke did put a document together with all this information as well that we have discussed in previous meetings as well. When it comes to difference between the ten, the fifteen, the two million, the three million. So that that was the discussion that we had in the previous meeting as well. So there's also um, information that he's sharing that has been shared publicly as well, correctly? Okay, Jimmy, the floor is yours.
Um, I basically agree with uh, Luke on the truest. Uh, ten year sounds fine. I, I wasn't quite, I didn't get a, Luke, I, I don't know if you weighed on the two million versus three million. Uh, sounds as though maybe, two million, is that what you said?
Yeah, I didn't say it, but yeah, I, I want to give the two million.
I think the.
Only, yeah, three minutes and then we'll answer whoever you want to.
Right, well, I need to ask him a question. So uh, the uh, so I, I think two million, uh, ten years sounds fine. Uh, I, I just want to make uh, one comment because I got some plaque and uh, uh, just how we titled this. Somebody said, well, why do we need a, a, a welcome center for that huge amount? And I think uh, it's much more than a welcome center. It would be city hall, maybe community resource center. And I'm wondering if there's somewhere we can, at some point, we not use the welcome center as, I mean, we did that for some of the funding. But make sure that the community knows this is not like a, just a welcome center, but it's going to be a, a multi-use uh, space for the community as well as city hall. So I think somehow we want to make sure that's clear because I was at a meeting at Rainier Matter and people were saying, why do you need a, you know, that, all that money for a welcome center? I think, you know, it's not just a welcome center. So that's something I think we have to make sure people understand in the community. But anyway, two million, ten year truest.
Thank you so much. Uh, Hopkins, uh, Mr. Hopkins, I know you're in the line. What is it being um, named? I know you, there was a whole complete name on it. Is that just like the Mariner uh, welcome centers? The Mariner welcome, welcome and civic center, something along those lines. Uh, but uh, the funding is coming for the, the major funding is coming uh, from being um, a welcome center. Mr. Hopkins, am I correct on that? When it comes to a name?
That was my understanding. I didn't think we were able to qualify for certain grant opportunities and funding if it was labeled as a civic center. So I think that's why we changed the name to a welcome center. But um, I don't know about that in detail.
Yeah, welcome and community center. That's, that's fine, but the welcome needs, the welcome center needs to be part of the, uh, the, the, what it, that is, it's not a working title yet, but that's what it is if that clarifies it.
Maybe welcome and something else, you know.
Yeah, we could work on those fine details.
Yeah, I just, I just want, I mean, I, I think in more point, I just think in terms of the community, people know what it is. So I think that's something we have to talk about.
All right, thank you so much. Uh, Valerie?
Um, thank you very much for putting all this together and thank you for putting together the memo. I think that was um, really helpful for me to see the different options and everything like that. Um, I um, agree that I think the ten year um, and two million dollar proposal makes sense. Um, so that's all I have to say about that. I think it's good.
Thank you so much, Valerie. Jared?
Yep, man, I just saw, want to reaffirm stuff other folks have said, just that, you know, thank you for putting together this together and um, all the detail, the briefing that was in the materials that are in the briefing um, packet were very helpful. Um, and that are before you as well. So thank you very much. Um, and just, you know, as, as, again, as Luke said, you know, the space, um, we are very limited in space. It's very difficult to do anything with Potts Hall uh, because of its historic status, um, because of its location. This will allow us to, um, you know, give us flexibility, um, be able to hold, um, have the community space we need uh, for the city that we are and then um, um, gain some additional flexibility, some of the city's other, uh, other spaces that currently owns as we uh, continue to support redevelopment, um, and economic development, uh, additional economic development in our, in our downtown core, excuse me, along Rhode Island Avenue. Um, thank you, thank you for that. I'm, you know, I think, you know, given the, usually sometimes the option that's facilitated through the uh, public opportunity sometimes can be better. Uh, in this case, I think, you know, based with the uh, CDA option and the inflexibilities and the challenges and the, and quite frankly, the waiting um, that is incurred by it, not to mention probably a higher interest rate, given how the trajectory of uh, low interest rates is generally has been going up and up significantly and we have the opportunity under truest for, I think, to lock in something, something good that's going to be lower than what, um, what will come in the future. So, you know, very much for me leaning on the truest option. Um, you know, again, as Luke had stated, I, I do like the idea of um, of um, you know, a shorter, make that happen, saving, saving residents, uh, taxpayer, tax, um, residents from the city and taxpayers money. Um, money uh, over, over time. And um, you know, given that we, we do have some space to work with. So um, that's all I have right now. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Jared. So.
You have about three minutes remaining.
Thank you, Melissa. You're supposed to time the council members and myself. You're like ten minutes ago. Um, so I will say to me, um, I mean, I told you guys how I felt originally when it came to tourists, but we definitely need to make sure that, I think in the last meeting, once we heard all the information that Leslie uh, presented, uh, we were definitely leaning towards truest. We wanted to see the memo was in front, the information was forward, make sure we have the follow-up meeting to make sure we did a due diligence. So um, I'm definitely not very surprised once the memo got in front of us and it was, it was submitted for us to be able to review it. That this is where we're heading. So um, to be very clear, we are doing, we are leaning, uh, we are all in agreement. And we'll call for the vote and just want to make sure that this is clear between us before I open up the floor to you guys once again. That um, we are looking at truest as the option of financing. We are looking for two million and the ten year option. Uh, council, if, if that is incorrect, please let me know, but that's my understanding and what I'm hearing from all of you guys. Okay, hearing none, that, that basically says, so I will close this part and then I'll take it to the vote. So I want to make sure Mr. Kamali and Leslie and Alyssa, are we good and Hopkins, are we good with that information so far?
We are good so far, Mayor, but we also need to know if you're going to use option, which of the prepayment options? The in-whole only at any time with a one percent premium? Or the in-whole only after five, roughly five years?
You're breaking up. I can't hear you. Can you try to say that again? You're breaking, you're breaking up.
I'm sorry. Um, the two prepayment options are, you can prepay in whole at any time, but any prepayment will carry a one percent premium of the principal balance you're prepaying. Or you can't prepay for roughly the first five years. And once you can prepay, it's in whole only, but with no prepayment premium.
Okay, so let me get the first part. Council, we're in agreement with the first part now. Leslie is asking us for us to be able to make, um, so I'm gonna go ahead for a, a vote on the first part, or Leslie, should we do, or Alyssa, should we do the vote on everything as stated? Or do you want to do vote for each one of them to follow through with it? Alyssa, that might be a question for you.
I can't. Um, it's um, somehow, it's sometimes clearer to vote on the items individually in case you have dissent from a particular point.
Okay, perfect. And council, the first one I'm gonna ask you to, if we could please add um, at least ten more minutes uh, to this item.
So moved.
Seconded.
All right, we properly moved and second, any discussion? Okay, any objections? Abstention, hearing none. Um, this has been moved, but unanimously to add ten more minutes. So Melissa, we're adding ten more minutes, okay? All right, Melissa, do me a favor. Can you write down what, what we just said when it came to the three points? So that was on the screen. And then council, I'm opening up the floor in the same order when it comes to um, and Leslie, do you have a recommendation on which will be more beneficial at this point for us to do?
Mayor, it's really a question of if you think you're essentially going to have the cash.
We can't hear you again.
Rates could um, go so low next five years that you would want to pay off the whole thing. And I say, if interest rates went lower, then you might want to undertake a refunding bond. But if you do not think you are likely to be prepaying the entire then outstanding principal amount of the bond for the first five years, then I would go with the option of prepayment in whole um, with no premium after the first five years.
Okay, council, I'm opening up the floor once again in the same order. If there's something that you have to um, ask, you know, two, three questions, they have put all the questions together so that way Leslie or Alyssa or Kamali or Hopkins will be able to answer your question, okay? So Luke, go ahead.
Yeah, I like the option of saying we're not going to prepay at all in the first half of the term. Um, because I don't think we would. I think that'd be too much money outstanding for the city to afford to prepay. Um, with the option of prepaying in the latter half at no penalty, um, because I think we could maybe pay it two, three years off earlier. That's the only, that's the only foreseeable situation I could see the city ever being in is paying it off two or three years early. I don't see it being able to pay it off in the first half of the term. So I would go with that option. That way, if we do want to pay it off here too, too early, we don't have to pay a penalty. Thanks.
Do me a favor, Luke. Say it in at least one sentence so that way Melissa could write it down because I'm asking her to put this information on screen. So when we call for the vote, we go each of the items by a vote, okay?
So.
So option that you're voting for, that you, your comment is you would like to do the, the payment in the second half with no penalty?
Yep, I would like to do um, uh, no prepayment permitted during the first half of the term. Um, with prepayment permitted during the second half of the term at no penalty.
All right, thank you so much. Melissa, you got that? If not, can you like email her the, 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 the information, Luke, so that way we have it up on screen when we do the motion? So it makes it easier for us. Can you help me with that?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Thank you. So send it to Melissa, uh, obviously, the city manager and council as well. Thank you, uh, Luke. Uh, Jimmy, um, you're next.
Uh, I don't have anything to add. Uh, I agree with what Luke had said. Uh, Mr. Hopkins raised a question about three million. And I think what concerned me was that if we, 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 we would have to use all three million dollars. So uh, with two million, we could always try and figure out how to get the extra million. But if we get to three million, we, we couldn't. We, we have to use all three million is, is what I heard is why we didn't go for three million because we were committed to spending, you know, every penny of the three million. And if we got other money, we might not be doing that. So that's why I, I was for the two million. And uh, Mr. Nedler asked about the interest rate.
I just. I gave it to him, Jimmy.
Okay, so.
So I was, I'm gonna open up the floor if, uh, after to like, you know, to staff, but also like, you know, the community, starting with Brian, actually, because he's, he has a lot of information on this project. If there's something else he needs to add, so. Uh, but Jimmy, so you are in the same agreement with uh, with Luke as well, correct?
One, one sticks together. Yes.
Hey, loving, loving war one. All right, uh, Valerie and then Jared, go ahead.
Yeah, I, um, thank you. I agree um, that um, the, you know, having the option to prepay it early, but not um, within the first three years makes a lot of sense, um, and especially without the payment penalty. So um, yep, that's, that's good for me. So thank you.
Thank you, Valerie. Jared?
Yep, and I concur with that, that statement. So nothing additional.
All right, perfect. Just to be clear, I gave you guys all individual chances to be able to review this information. And in the meantime, Luke, go ahead and put it into words. And if you could put the other um, things on it so we could see it on screen. So that when I call for the vote for each single one of them, we all see it and the community sees it. So Leslie, is there anything else that we need to discuss beyond going for each of the votes for each one of this?
Not in terms of the option, Mayor, but a- after you go through the votes, we have to decide which state will have the special meeting for any option.
Okay, council will look at their agenda for either next Tuesday or next Wednesday. In the meantime, and I'm gonna open the floor to um, Mr. uh, Mr. Kamali and Mr. Hopkins. Is there anything else to add on your end?
I have minister and a mayor.
What, what happened, Melissa?
Five minutes remaining.
Just give it, give us twenty minutes. Council, please, can you guys please approve twenty minutes? I'd rather have more than less.
So moved.
Properly we move. I seconded. Any objections, discussion objections? Hearing none, twenty minutes have been approved. All right, perfect. Um, okay, so Mr. Kamali, anything else to add?
No, thank you, Mayor. Um, unless if anybody has any question, I'll be glad to answer.
All right, perfect. Uh, Mr. Hopkins, any questions or comments?
Um, no questions or comments, thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Hopkins. Um, okay, I will be opening up to the public. I will start with um, former council member slash mayor, uh, Brian Nettler. I know you posted something, but I want to know if there's something else you need to add. We'd like me to read this, uh, Brian. Brian Nettler? He left us unsupervised, Brian.
Says he's good in the chat.
Yeah, I just saw it. I said, uh, when he said it's not that this is a, a shovel-ready project. It has been for a while. In fact, all construction drawings done in country permits already issued. But there's a delay on how long those permits are valid. Time is of the essence. Go for community legacy, money later. And hopefully a congressional earmark. All right, perfect. Uh, Mr. Hopkins already answered a question. Um, okay, perfect. Um, anybody else from the community which is to speak, please let me know, type your name and where, where you're at. Okay. Luke, can you put the other ones also in an email and send it out as well? Because we're gonna have to vote for each of them individually.
O- okay, um.
So Melissa, do you have them?
Yeah, she's got it on the screen there. That's what I sent her.
But the other three, so we're gonna have to vote for the, oh, you got two million investment term, uh, when it comes to also going um, voting in support for, to go for the truest option. And I think it was the third one. Because we have to divide them, each of them. So I'm gonna have to ask you guys for both, like, put a motion on the floor for who are we, who are we, you know, for tourists as our financial um, identity for this, for the Potts Hall project. Okay? All right, so I was giving time for if the public had anything. Um, Jared, anything on Facebook?
No comments on Facebook.
Okay, and I think definitely Luke and uh, Brian Avios make the appeal when it comes to it. Um, it is a historical building. Um, the usage for the top will be uh, chambers, but it also opens up for us to be able to use it as uh, for our community meetings. Uh, right now, the space is very limited in city buildings. Um, to be able to utilize or do events, or even have, you know, our community meetings or committee meetings. It's super tight. The biggest room we have is the PD, PD room, and even that is very small for us to be able to do items. And we want to make sure that we maintain our buildings and they are where they need to be. If not, they'll continue the appreciating and devaluing, and that's not a smart investment for our city as a whole. Alright, so let me know when you're ready, so I can start making it and and also, Council, please look at your calendars for Tuesday or Wednesday of next week, so that we could have the next meeting. We could do that via email, but if you guys could, you know, have that email. Jimmy, can you send that email around already? So that we could, I know you're very good at that with us, so that we could like.
Either day is good for me. Maybe people could just, you can just do it right now. I'll say either way if you want. But I'm good Tuesday or Wednesday.
What happened?
I'm good Tuesday or Wednesday.
Perfect. Jared?
I'm good Tuesday or Wednesday.
Valerie?
Me too.
Luke?
I'm only good Tuesday of next week.
So we're having it Tuesday. That's why I wanted to make sure you guys looked at it. So Tuesday, 7:00 PM, please. Communications team and Melissa, can you guys please put the notice out for the next meeting will be held on Tuesday of next week? And that'll be Tuesday, the 26th. Okay. Perfect. Alright, so since we have this in front of us, I'll go ahead and start with the line of votes, individual votes, Council. So we'll be making separate, separate motions and votes for each, each one of them, okay? Alright. Motion on the floor to approve the preparation supporting doc, financial documents for Pots Hall for 2 millions and financing for tourist bank for a term of 10 years. With no prepayment for the first half of the term, but prepayment permitted during the second half of the term with no prepayment penalties. Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay, second by Councilmember Cheswick. Any discussion? Any objections? Any abstentions? Okay, so this part of the, of the motion moves unanimously by Mayor and Council 500. Okay, we're not doing that right order, but we'll do it. Motion to approve support preparing financial documents for Pots Hall with a tourist bank. Will that fulfill it, Leslie?
We need a second motion? I think we're good.
He want, they wanted individual motions for it, so in case you need to break something down for whatever reason, you just focus on that motion.
Well, Alyssa had suggested breaking it down, but I think you've cut, unless, I'll let Alyssa jump in, but I believe you've covered it. The three points were the maximum principal amount, which is the 2 million term, which is the 10 years, and the prepayment options. So I think with the mo, with the language you just read there and that the Council voted on, you have covered everything, but I defer to Alyssa if we need to take a further vote.
Alyssa, do you want me to separate them one by one, or that will be fine?
No, it's fine. Since it was unanimous, there is no problem.
Okay, perfect. So, okay, Council, anything else to add to this point? So we will be meeting next Tuesday, the 26th at 7:00 PM, okay? So put all the information out, and that'll give you enough time to do whatever you need to do, right, legal team?
As I understand it, Mayor, the city clerk will need to post the agenda for the meeting by tomorrow. And I will need to provide the city with the ordinance by Monday, correct?
By Friday.
By tomorrow?
Yeah, so sorry. It's been a long week. Yes, by tomorrow, Friday, yes, correct.
Okay.
Alright.
Just so you know, it's gonna be long, and the purpose of Tuesday's meeting will be to introduce the ordinance.
Yeah, and that, thank you so much. Okay, Council, can you put the agenda back in the screen, Melissa? Thank you so much. It only took 40, 50 minutes, guys.
Mayor?
Yes.
Did, I just, I sent some hesitation from our attorneys in preparing a document by Friday. Did we, do we need the financing document by Friday, or just the, just the language for Melissa to put in the community announcement tomorrow, and they can get us the document on Monday?
I will say by Friday, as in a day, will be best, so we could review it. It's about 10 pages worth of documents.
I don't know that Lindsay can give you a document to the best of her abilities overnight. I just, I don't think that's a reasonable expectation.
Yeah, and I don't think we're gonna, we know what the terms are. It's just gonna be a ton of legalese in there that I don't think we're gonna wanna read or need to read.
Well, I'm gonna read it, because it's our responsibility to read them. That's something that we need to do. So I just was trying to, I mean, if they could give it to us, like, you know, as early as Monday as possible, that's fine, but that means I now have to like rearrange my schedule to like read all those documents to be prepared for Tuesday. So it gives me less than 24 hours, and they have to also be out for the public as well for them to review them and read them if they choose to.
The, I actually anticipated what your decision was gonna be, so I've already started drafting. But it is a fairly substantial. I can certainly get you a draft tomorrow, and then if you have any comments, you can give them to me on Monday, and I can tweak it for you if, if that works for you. It is just going to be the ordinance. That's the only document it is. Closing documents will, will come later.
Okay, can you send us the draft for tomorrow, Leslie? That definitely will help. And then, so that way, and I think that confusion was originally that it was gonna be the 10-page document that you had mentioned prior.
It's actually gonna be longer than 10 pages, but yes.
Lord. Okay, thank you, Leslie, for accommodating, at least sending us the draft, so we could start moving on it and and reading it, because we want to make sure we also, you know, I want to make sure we also do our due diligence and even, you know, and give you enough time to, like, if there's something, we have a question to send it to you, and that could be arranged. And 24 hours before a meeting might be too close of a call.
Remember too, that it will be introduced next week, and then there will be two weeks before it's considered for passing. So it can always be passed as amended. In order to pass as amended, I would need feedback from you in that interim period to provide you with the written amendments. But it is, it is not a one bite at the apple.
Perfect. Thank, yeah, so if you could send the draft, it's fine, now that we could get clear that how much time we have, but that we can at least start looking at it. So realistically, that way we could look at it as well, because, you know, I'll speak for myself. It's not like, you know, a 5 for 1, I'm gonna read, you know, what the amount of pages are, and by 5 for 3, I'm gonna give you feedback, right? I might need to digest a little bit at a time to be able to give you the, the feedback, especially if it's a, you know, when it comes to ordinance. But thank you for that. So just send us a draft. Melissa, you're gonna work on the agenda, correct? So it could be posted by tomorrow.
Yes, Mayor.
And then, so work with our legal team to make sure we have everything we need on the agenda, so that way it reflects what is needed, because the last thing we need is for it to put, make an R and R in, okay?
Should I send the draft to Ms. Sam and Mr. Kamali to distribute to you all as the best method?
Yeah, it's fine either way. You could send it directly and copy Melissa and Mr. Kamali, so that way it gets to all of us at the same time, okay?
Okay, I'll check with them to make sure I have all of your email addresses.
Okay, so yeah, so it's a Council, I'm Maranier, indeed, I'll get all of us.
Okay.
But they could send it to you as well, okay?
Okay.
Thank you so much.
You're quite welcome. Have a good rest of the meeting.
Okay, thank you, and thank you for accommodating us in your busy schedule too, Leslie. We definitely appreciate you, okay?
Of course.
Okay.
Good night.
Good night. Alright, so Council, Luke, anything else, or anybody else? Okay, moving on to item number five. Introduction and adoption of emergency ordinance 07-2022. Amending the Code of Ordinances of the City of Maranier, Chapter 13, Traffic. To add Section 13-123 Speed Monitoring System, thereby codifying the City of Maranier Speed Monitoring System Ordinance Number 9-209, and amending the city's speed monitoring system to reflect recent changes in the state law. 20 minutes allocated for this, so I'm gonna open up the floor. Chief, you are here, so open up the floor to you, chief, to let us know what this is, what is needed, and what it will solve. Go ahead, chief.
Good evening, everybody. Pretty much this emergency ordinance is needed. We need to codify the existing ordinance 9-2009. It was never made a part of our code of ordinances. Also, we need to amend our ordinance to provide for the recent changes in our state law. Transportation Article 21-809 was amended by the Maryland General Assembly to authorize municipalities in Prince George's County to place speed cameras on highways and residential districts with a maximum speed limit of 35 miles per hour, and they may be operated 24 hours a day, 7 days a week. So that's what we're, what we're deciding on tonight.
Thank you so much, chief. Council gonna open up the floor to you. Also, as a reminder, when we had the walkthrough on Rhode Island, we noticed that the signs that were posted were that we needed to be that we could now be able to utilize them, not just for during school time, but 24 hours as chief posted, so signs will be changed as well once, you know, if we vote in favor of this, to make sure that takes into effect right away. Okay, so I will start with word two this time around. Jared, Valerie, Jimmy, and Luke, go ahead. Jared?
Chief, Kamali, thank you for bringing this before the council. I, you know, I think we'd all agree, it's important to codify something that we, I believe it looks like we passed an ordinance on back in 2009, but had not formally codified. And I also agree that we need to amend our system to reflect the state of Maryland's laws and make sure that's in alignment. So you have my full support on this. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Valerie?
Yeah, thank you. I think Jared said everything I was gonna say, so it's good. I support this as well.
Thank you so much, Valerie. Jimmy?
I have nothing to add. I'm supportive.
Thank you so much, Luke.
I support it. Thanks, everyone.
And I support it as well. Thank you guys so much for, one, making sure we're, we are where we need to be and doing the due diligence to bring the documents to us, so we can also follow through and do the necessary steps. So Council, I will ask, I'm calling for the question, so who would like to put a motion on the floor?
So moved.
A motion to approve amending the Code of Ordinances of the City of Maranier, Chapter 13, Traffic, to add Section 13-123 Speed Monitoring System, thereby codifying the City of Maranier Speed Monitoring System Ordinance Number 9, 2009, and amending the city's speed monitoring system to reflect recent changes in state law. Anybody would like to second? I heard Valerie. Thank you, Valerie. Any discussion, council members? What, Jerry, you raising your hand? No, so any objections, abstentions? Hearing none. This motion has passed unanimously 500 by Mayor and Council. So chief, the ordinance has passed, okay?
Thank you, thank you all.
So, Melissa should have it available, I believe, tomorrow, so that we could all swim by and sign, okay? But also to make sure we are clear and it's understandable whether our signatures in the document tomorrow at 9:00 AM or not. Because we passed it, the vote carries, but it's definitely beautiful to have all of our signatures in the document, okay? Thank you, chief, for the work that you do. It's very appreciated. Please extend your, thank you also to the whole police department team. We definitely appreciate the work to continue keeping the streets safe and community policing as well.
Thank you all. Thank you.
Perfect. Okay. Alright, so moving on to item number six, but I definitely would like, would like to ask for a moment of privilege. We did receive a notice from WSSC's Water that on Monday, there are, there's gonna be water shut down on the 4000 block of 31st Street. So from 8:00 to 4:00 PM, correct, Valerie? So please be aware of that, and the city's gonna be sending communication out, and Mayor and Council will also be sending communication out to remind you guys as well. And number two, there is a food distribution tomorrow from Maranier First Baptist Church. That's across the street from Maranier Elementary. And they're gonna be giving out food, including some chicken, as well, it's from 11:00 to 1:00. Okay, Council, do you have any announcement to make, since I did take this moment of privilege and was to close the meeting?
I have one.
Go ahead, Jimmy.
Just that the Cert Committee with new leadership of Melissa Barringer is the new president is having its meeting Monday at 7:30 PM at the police station.
Thank you so much, Jimmy. Luke, do you have anything?
No, just that the, well, the reason I was late is I was meeting with some folks who have been stewards of the Food Forest. They're working on really integrating their work with the Green Team. And coming back to the Mayor and Council was sort of a presentation in September on on that integration effort to make sure that this is sort of more under the auspice formally of the Green Team, and so be on the lookout for that.
Thank you so much, Luke. Valerie, any, any, any announcements they need to make?
No, not, not.
Thank you so much, Valerie. Jared?
No announcements for me, thank you.
Also, chief, can you give us information for National Night Out as well, if you're still here? Chief Falsen?
Yes, ma'am. Can you hear me, Mayor?
Yeah, we could hear you.
Yes, National, National Night Out will be the first Tuesday of August this year. It'll be from 5:00 to 8:00. And it'll be held in front of City Hall, in the parking lot area. Give you the exact date.
August the 2nd.
August 2nd.
Thank you so much, Mr. Kamali, Melissa, Jared, communications team. Thank you so much as well for putting this meeting together for the fast turnaround as well. As we mentioned, the meeting is Tuesday, the 25th, which is next Tuesday. Council members, can you guys also look into your calendar, because after the meeting on Tuesday, two weeks later, we should be having the following meeting after we present the ordinance this Tuesday, okay? So that way you could clear, clear your calendar for Tuesday or Wednesday, and and that'd be the email that you could, you could send out also, Jimmy, as well, to make sure we get what day will be like the follow-up meeting after Tuesday, okay? So we could have a day pin on it as well.
So the question is, it has to be at least two weeks, but it could be later than that.
14 days.
I mean, 14 days.
14 days, and Jimmy is gonna be 8 August to 9, if we go Tuesday 26.
So it could be more than.
It could be later than that, right?
Yeah, it could be more than 14, minimum. As long as it's not under 14, we're good. It could be 15, 16, 17, but obviously the sooner we pass it, the, you know, they could get on with the work to make sure we meet the deadline in August, okay?
But also, Mayor, the deadline for the bank is August 26, so after the second meeting, we need to have it 14 days for the, to be published. So we want to make sure to, if we do that by August 9, then it's gonna be August 23, so we have three days before August for the deadline.
Okay, but Council, looking whether it's a Tuesday, Wednesday, works, works for you guys, you know? Because I want to make sure, if we're possibly. because I wanna make sure, if we're possibly gonna be here, you, you know, for all of us to be here, you know? And we'll, we'll make that meeting as quickly as it is today, you know, it's about a, an hour and six minutes.
Mayor, just wanna ask Mr. Kamali, is the following week too late, like the fifteenth or sixteenth?
Yeah, that's too late.
Yeah, it's gonna be too late, Jimmy, because the bank, the Truist Bank has a deadline on August twenty-sixth, and the loan has to be closed by that time.
So I have a question for legal, okay? If on Tuesday we meet and we bore on the ordinance, and it's a strong support towards what we're seeing in front of us, right, and we are directing people to say like, look, we are strongly leaning towards that, so we're, you know, I think, I think that also will help to get that meeting moving fast. Uh, so that way they could work on, you know, doing whatever paperwork they need to do as well, that presented for the next following a meeting. But figure out Tuesday or Wednesday works for you guys, um, after either on the fourteen or the fifteen day, if Tuesday is, if we cannot meet, um, if Wednesday is better for all of us, but look into your calendars, I just don't wanna put pressure you guys to decide this minute on the meeting.
I'd rather decide now.
Yeah. Circulating and be done with it, because I cannot tell you guys right now, I could tell you like, most likely it's gonna be good, but I'd rather put a meeting to an end and then just.
Right, well, I'll just do an, I'll just do an email, mayor, we can just.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and, s- sorry, just what dates are we talking about again? Like, sorry, can some, one person say that?
I think it's the nine, ten, or eleventh.
Guys, I'm gonna, I'm gonna be in Minnesota, I'm gonna be in Minnesota, I can do the ninth. Can, if we, can, can we, I'm gonna be on a lake, you know, three hours northwest of the Twin Cities. I'm gonna have to find internet or use my phone, but the Tuesday, the ninth would be the best, if we can lock that down now.
So, um, I'm, I'm trying to figure out if it works for me, and we need to find if it works for all of us, guys, because I'm also traveling. Because as much as you got, I love you guys, like, already had it to do a lot of plan changes for today, so I'm gonna try to change everything for the ninth, but I'm not sure if the ten works better, that's the only thing that I wanna make sure you guys are aware of it, so I'm gonna try to change it, but it's definitely like, you know, it's making it very hard, because, um, I'm doing a lot of the, the extra stuff I need to do right now.
What time?
There's gonna be an email, so that way we don't hold up like the whole community and trying to figure out a day. We could have it tonight and then get it done, okay?
What time?
I'm trying to make calls right now, as soon as I hang up to give you an answer, do you want me to put you guys, do you want me to put this meeting on hold, I could send messages and get you guys an answer? That's what I'm telling you guys, give me a list of tonight to get this information out. But I, I originally thought it was, it is, it was, it wasn't sure it was fourteen or fifteen days that we needed. Okay, so I'll, uh, Jimmy, if you could send that email, I'm gonna start making calls to like, arrange what I need to do to change dates to the night, and, um, and, and, you know, thank you guys, if you guys already know, great, wonderful for you.
I'll send out an email, we can talk.
You know, alright, can I have a, um, motion to adjourn?
Sure, I've moved to return.
There's been a motion on the floor, second?
Second.
It's been properly second, any discussion? Objection, abstention? This, uh, meeting has officially come to an end at eight, ten P M. Thank you guys so much, I know, um, this is when we do, and other stuff with work, and you guys are being extra flexible, including our, our, our staff who as, assume we were not gonna be meeting, because that's what we told them. But thank you for being flexible, Mr. Kamali, your entire team, and making this happen for us as well, as well for, for legal team, okay? Thank you guys so much, have a good night.
Bye bye. Thank you, mayor, thank you, council, thank you, chief, thank you, Alyssa.
Mayor, we have the public hearing.
Oh. Moving on to public hearing, Melissa, how can you almost let me go? Moving on to, okay, so we are journeying from this meeting and we're opening the open hearing, Melissa, can you move the agenda up? Hold on, you guys, we're gonna do officially the open hearing. Next time, remind me. Uh, okay, so I'll do a call order, just a call order for an emergency, um, for a hearing regarding parking meetings and collection, I'll just read the whole thing. Agenda for the public hearing regarding emergency ordinance zero dash, uh, number oh six dash twenty-two. Amending the code of ordinance for the city of Mount Rainier, chapter nine, parking meters, section nine, oh eight, collections. Uh, this is, uh, for me for Tuesday, July twenty-first, following a special legislative meeting. Call to order, Jimmy Tarlo?
Here.
Luke Chesek?
Here.
Valerie Woodrow?
Here.
Jared Stoffes?
Here.
And us here, so all of us are here present, um, review of the agenda, vice mayor, can you review it, please? Jared, your mic is off if you're reading.
Oh, sorry. Um, agenda for the public hearing regarding emergency ordinance, number six, twenty-twenty-two, amending the code of ordinance of the city of Mount Rainier, chapter nine, parking meters, section nine dash one oh eight, collections, Thursday, July twenty-first, twenty-twenty-two, following the special legislative meeting. Number one, call to order, number two, review of the agenda, number three, public hearing regarding emergency ordinance, number, uh, six dash twenty-twenty-two, amending the code and ordinance of the city of Mount Rainier, chapter nine, parking meters, section nine dash one oh eight, collections to provide for the engagement of debt collection contractor, debt collection contractors to recover outs, recover, sorry, outstanding unpaid fines for parking meter violations, number four, adjournment.
Thank you so much, council, is there any, uh, any additions, abstractions to the agenda or edits? Hearing none, uh, this agenda will move as presented with no changes. Uh, moving on to item number three, uh, the public hearing regarding emergency ordinance oh six dash twenty-two, amending the code of ordinance of the city of Mount Rainier, chapter nine, parking meters, section nine dash one oh eight, collections to provide for the engaging of debt collections contractors to recover outstanding unpaid fines for parking meters violation. Chief, um, can you give us a quick run-through of what the ordinance is, so that way we could hear it as I open the the hearing to see if any would like, anybody would like to speak on this one?
Uh, sure, mayor. This allows the mayor and the city council, uh, to contract with a collection agency or a law firm, or use other legal means to collect unpaid fines on a situation for speed, speeding offense detected by the city's speed monitoring system cameras, or failing to stop at a red light traffic signal as detected by the city's red light camera program. If such fine remains unpaid for more than sixty days after becoming due, and may charge the cost of such collection to the violator, so that pretty much summarizes that.
Thank you so much, chief, and for the record as well, um, this ordinance was approved by mayor and council, correct? Um, on June twenty-first, twenty-twenty-two, so we're doing a due diligence to also have a hearing. Um, because there's amending of the code of ordinance. Okay, so I will be opening up the floor to the community members, community members, if you are here and would like to speak on this, um, on this public hearing, please type your name on the chat, and, uh, we'll call upon you, make sure you let us know what your street and block number is, you have three minutes to speak uninterrupted. Um, if you're a member of a group, you have five minutes, and you, the rest members of the group will seed, uh, their time. Okay, thank you, um, and let us know, uh, Jared, also let us know, there's somebody on Facebook that would like to make a com, comment on this, um, item, on this item of the upper hearing.
No comments.
Thank you. Okay, council, um, I know we opened the open hearing and I'm not seeing nobody here or any comments. Is there anything you guys need to add, or you're good?
I'm good.
Thank you, Valerie.
Good.
Thank you, Luke.
Good.
Thank you, Jimmy. Jared?
All good, sorry, I was stuck waiting for you to call me, thanks.
Thank you. Okay, so, um, I don't see anybody having anything to add. Okay? So can you put the agenda back up, uh, Melissa? So definitely know that there was no member of, uh, the community that made any comments, whether on our virtual Zoom call or on Facebook, okay? Alright, so council, I'll move on to item number four, adjournment. Is we probably move, can we get a second?
Second.
Is we probably move, and second, any discussion? Objection, abstentions? Hearing none, uh, this public hearing comes to an end at eight seventeen P M. Okay? And now, the, now for reals, we are adjourned until next Tuesday, thank you, Melissa.
Welcome.
Staff, appreciate it.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good night, everybody, and please drive home safely if you're not home already, okay?
Bye, everybody.
Bye.